Can I call to order our regular meeting schedule?
Oh, Catherine's calling.
Okay, thanks Catherine.
Thank you.
Um, okay, well, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, first things first, is there a request to remove any items from the consent agenda for discussion?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Fine.
Nothing.
Wow.
Well, Shane is not here, so I just wanted.
That's true, that's true.
Maybe you have to go through all the checks.
Great, thank you so much.
We can do it anyway, I'm ready.
I'm ready. Okay, uh, all right, well then, can I have a motion to approve the order of items for the regular?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Great, all right, well, the um, president's verbal report, all I really have to um, say is, of course, we all know that this past weekend, um, our library director Tara celebrated ten years at our library.
Wow.
And what a, what a gift that is to us, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And um, yeah, so we are thrilled to be able to celebrate that with you.
To all of us.
Thank you.
This is great. Um, and here's to another hundred and forty. Uh, I also want to pass around a very nice um, thank you card that we received from the um, friends of the library uh, after honoring them during Friends of the Library Week last month. Well, thank you for all the supply, yes.
Thank you for doing it.
Oh yeah, of course, of course, they do so much for us and um, and for our library that um, that we just, we couldn't,
Yes, that's nice.
There's so much that we couldn't do without them, and so um, it we, it's great for us to be able to thank them. Um, and the last thing I want to say is, happy Thanksgiving. I, you know, this is like the season of gratitude, and it's so nice to be able to, to have an excuse to think of things
Thank you.
Same too.
that we are um, so grateful for, and I personally, as you all know, um, I have no problem gushing about how grateful I am to uh, this board and um, to all of you for serving uh, here and, and for our library, and of course, for our incredible staff, everybody. Uh, and that's really all that I uh, have to say this month, and so I will turn it over to you Tara for our director's report.
Well, thank you for the anniversary wishes, it's gone by very quickly, that ten years.
It's scary, yes.
Um, it is scary, but it's been fun.
That's a good sign, it's a good sign.
Thank you. Yeah. Um, well, our newly designed library cards have been um, circulating and being issued. We've issued, as of November seventh, a hundred and twenty-six have, have been issued. The most popular design is the one with the rendering of the entrance.
Oh, interesting, okay.
That's one I got.
Me too.
I didn't.
Really?
Can you hear?
Yes, of course, of course.
I like, I honestly, I liked them all.
I did too.
I all couldn't decide.
I did too.
Yeah.
Guy at the circulation desk was kind of chuckling at me. Um, our door access upgrade project has been um, has entered phase two, it's actually complete. Um, all of the hardware has been changed out on the study room doors in the computer center area. Um, so if you go look, you'll see a little reader and then a, a number keypad. Um, and patrons now need to go online and reserve a room, and they get a text message and an email with their numeric code, and then they type in the code, and then they get access to the room. Um, it's been going very well, uh, system staff have been doing a lot of handholding and walking people through the new process because it is different. People do have to have their library card and a PIN number, and a lot of people don't have that PIN.
Interesting.
So that's been um, probably the biggest hangup, but I think, once we get past that and people get used to it, and we get our procedures done, it'll be just fine.
Do you find that it's generally the same population over and over that use?
Yeah, we have some, some folks who frequent users of those rooms. Our hope is that this will make it a little bit more equitable, so those folks who do come in and camp out maybe all day long.
Yes.
Now we'll be able to do that, so we'll be able to spread the study room usage around a little bit more.
But you say that, so they're in the room, and then what happens when they're, is it a two hour block?
They can reserve, it's very tricky, they can reserve for two hours, up to four hours really, in one day.
Okay. Okay.
Two two hour reservations in one day, and they can revert, reserve it up to seven days in advance.
So they can only stay four hours?
Mm-hmm.
So they're in the room four hours, but there's no one coming in, how, does the door open up and say, get out?
Or, uh, no, if they, if they.
See, I go phone.
If they linger a little bit, and there's no one else in the rooms that needs them, we're not going to eject them.
Okay, but, but the next person could come and say, and they open it up and, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, well, yeah. Yeah, yep.
I'm sorry, where did you say you're clicking on?
To reserve. Uh, on the website.
On the.
Yep, so.
Or with the app?
Yep, and the app just basically sends you to the website.
Okay.
So yes, you can go on our website, make the reservation, you can also make it at a kiosk that is in the computer center. So if you don't have a computer at home, or you just didn't get around to it before you left, you can make that reservation there.
And so, someone can't just walk in?
They could, but.
So if something's available, they could, they could make the reservation for right now?
You got it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, interesting.
Yeah, I think it's good, I think it's gonna be really good. Um, okay, so you probably, um, I know you all read every word of the board packet, so you read the personnel committee mi- meeting minutes. Um, where I proposed converting our two open intern positions into a position called library assistant. You'll recall that earlier this year, we tried to hire an intern and couldn't find anybody to apply, and converted the position to an early childhood specialist. Well, we posted two positions, adult and youth, um, did not get a single application for either position.
And is it stated in um, whatever communication you have uh, to recruit, is it stated M L, M L S, M L I S?
They have to be, that was the requirement, is that they had to be enrolled in an M L I S program currently.
Okay.
And it was only a three-year appointment as well. So I think um, we did a, we had this theory that at Wayne State, which is the primary place where we get our interns, that their, their program is completely online, and so we thought maybe there's a bunch of out-of-state people enrolled in that program, and no one wants a job in Metro Detroit. But that's not the case, so there's three hundred and seventy-six people enrolled in that program right now, and of that, the vast majority live in Michigan, um, and probably the Metro Detroit area. So our uh, deduction is that people just can't afford a part-time position. That they're probably have a full-time job already, or they just can't afford to work for seventeen dollars an hour as a part-time position.
And go to school.
Right, and go to school. So, um, by removing that requirement to be enrolled in the program and taking away the three-year uh, term limit, we hope that that's a little bit more attractive to a wider pool of people. I mean, I can think of several people on staff right now that would be great in a position like that, that have no plans to go to library school for a variety of reasons, but love libraries, love providing service, love to pro- uh, provide support to librarians in all their duties, and that's what this person would do. So this person would work at the desk and um, assist with programs, assist with collection development, um, assist with some other duties, but all very closely under the eye of the librarians.
Most that might encourage that person to go for a library degree.
Exactly, yep, gives a little bit of a um, career progression for folks who join us as a page or clerical assistant or clerk. Um, so we are gonna, uh, the personnel committee was supportive of that, so we are going to post that position on Monday. See if we can get some folks for.
You will, not see, you will.
That's right. I think we will too.
Absolutely. Plus you're gonna be posting it in different places too.
Mm-hmm, yeah, Judy had some good ideas of some places to post it to find book people. Um, okay, uh, unfortunately, the library was a victim of check fraud. Um, a check was sent to Baker and Taylor, which as you know from reading the check disbursements, is a vendor we pay a lot of money to every month. They're a primary book, book vendor. Um, and it was not, it was cashed, but it was not cashed by Baker and Taylor. Um, you can go online and see our canceled checks, and when Monica uh, went online to look at the check because Baker and Taylor were saying they hadn't received their payment, we're like, but the check has been cashed. She found that somebody had scrubbed the Baker and Taylor information away and written in their own name and a, or a bogus name, and somehow cashed the check for thirteen thousand dollars. Baker and Taylor has, this has happened to many other libraries across the state of Michigan and probably around the country because everybody uses Baker and Taylor. Catherine had mentioned that she'd seen some articles about some checks being stolen from post offices in Atlanta, Baker and Taylor's in Georgia.
West Bloomfield.
Yeah.
Yeah, didn't we also have the problem with the electric, the check for the electric service several months ago? Something weird about them?
Yeah, but I think that was.
That wasn't hacked, that was.
It was, it was like a malware or something.
That was just.
It wasn't hacked, it was something that the post office, uh, anyway, nevermind.
Yeah.
It wasn't, yeah, it wasn't fraud.
You're right.
So, about three years ago, we were the victim of check fraud, a slightly different variation of it. And we instituted a thing called Positive Pay, I don't know if anybody knows what that is. But it's uh, an anti-fraud mechanism applied to a bank account where there's a computer that will check these different points of the check to make sure that it's proper and correct. We did not have Pay E, which is the person that the check is being written to, as well as points, but we do now. So that's one of the, if we had that, this may not have happened.
But what recourse do we have? Are we at thirteen thousand dollars?
Flagstar reimbursed it.
Okay.
Um, and we recut the check to Baker and Taylor just yesterday. And then Flagstar has, this is a known issue, and there's uh, already a police report, and this was added to that.
Township. Okay. Our, our, is our mail, um, do we drop it off at the post office, or is it picked up here?
Uh, well, it's picked up at the township, because we send the checks to the township and they mail them out.
Oh. Okay. Yeah, 'cause I bring everything to the post office now, um, 'cause people are going in the postbo- your own post box, I never do that, so.
I think we're working toward um.
All online?
Yeah.
Okay. We have other vendors, we, we electronic, right?
We pay everybody with a check.
A paper check.
Yeah.
So this is something that I think will start to discuss more as we move forward.
It's very annoying.
But electronic is fraud too, so you know, you just see how these smart people, but that's very strange.
It is, it's strange and annoying.
But it's a known issue that Baker and Taylor is having.
Uh-huh.
Yes.
Yes, so it's more likely happened down there and.
So it could be someone. Oh, I'm sure it did, I'm sure, yeah.
That sounds really suspect, doesn't it?
Yeah.
When they say it's a known issue.
But then they should be handling it.
Yeah, the thing that bugged me was, we had, going back and forth with our rep there saying, you know, she said, we don't have this check, and we kept saying, well, we sent it, and she never said, hey, this is going on, you guys might wanna look into it.
How did you find that out?
Well, we saw that it was cashed, but she was still insisting that we had, she hadn't received it. And then, that's when Monica looked online to look at the canceled check and saw that it had been scrubbed, and this other person's name written in.
But how did you find out that it was happening at?
There were some notices on the listserv. But in like July, so I, I remembered those notices going around on the email listserv, but I hadn't made the connection because it happened in July, and I think I searched my email again to see, you know, a vague memory came to me, and yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah.
It's even happening to a mail that has been put in a mailbox.
That's what happened the last time.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. People are going in with a sticky thing on the end.
You don't even need that, if you go to the Birmingham, if you go in about two weeks with the Christmas cards and holiday cards, they, people just have it in sticky napkin, you can just pull things, so, yeah. Crazy, well, that's too bad.
They've sealed off the ones in Birmingham, I thought.
And somebody crashed into, they're open now.
Uh, they're open, they had been sealed off.
They're huge now.
Yeah.
Well, I'm glad that we.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Figure this out, I'm glad that Flagstar is helpful.
Yes, that's very, very nice, yeah.
Um, and the last thing to mention is our photo contest, another photo contest, our eighth annual photo contest will open in January, January eighth, and it'll run through March seventeenth. We're planning an awards reception for Saturday, April thirteenth, um, so we'll put all those dates in the board, um, dates to remember. Um, but that awards reception might be a great opportunity for all of you to mix and mingle with voters in an election year.
Yes.
With the big name tags.
Yeah, picture perfect patterns is to me.
That's right.
And I'm looking forward to celebrating winter cheer with all of you at the winter party. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. Um. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda items? Do we, if we didn't take anything else?
No, 'cause we didn't take anything else, we skipped that one.
Right, yeah. Okay. I don't know if I've ever.
I know.
You've arrived. Have we ever had a meeting with a guest?
We have, many times, yes.
Oh, my goodness.
Um, not in the time I am in.
Just say that, so.
There you go.
Well, it is uh, time now for our call to the public, so. Hello.
Hello.
Oh, yeah.
It's Amanda.
But it is Amanda, visiting us from the S O C.
I am, um, S O C is busy getting ready for the winter party. It's our biggest due of the year, so um, as of a few minutes ago, we're up to a hundred and sixteen guests.
Wow.
Which is pre-COVID levels, so, very exciting, and thirty-three of those are people bringing a guest right now.
Yeah. Very nice.
It's gonna be a lot of fun.
It will be.
Yeah, lots of very competitive people about their quiz app.
Yeah.
Skin, I'm sure. Organ, larger, put it in there.
I will whisper it in here.
I need one.
Okay.
It said business casual.
That is what the invitation says.
Or holiday dress up, whatever.
I know what I'm wearing, and it won't be jeans, but I will let everyone choose for themselves.
Was the invitation? Was the invitation ever circulated around, 'cause I don't think I was.
I, I gave it out at a board meeting, and it might have been one.
It was in the board packet.
We, we will be making some notes of some things to do differently next year because we did mail them out to the trustees, and that perhaps should be shown if we don't have.
Do you need one?
Um, yeah, I wouldn't mind seeing it.
Just, I, I mean, I filled it out.
And what's the time?
Six to nine.
My babysitter is booked. Uh, thank you so much, Amanda.
Yes, thank you.
Um, okay, well, we don't have any um, unfinished business tonight, so we will move on to new business, and um, we are gonna talk about our roof appro- proposal.
Uh, so, um, as you all remember, our October fourth meeting, we talked about the problems with the roof and the membrane that's um, uh, delaminating, I think is the word, uh, from the gravel stop. Um, and Chris Schlaps from Rewald was present at that meeting, as well as Richard Renaud from Quinn Evans, and Chris talked about what was happening and some um, suggested solutions. And we moved toward with putting down some test strips of different kinds of tape on the roof. I did go up on the roof after that meeting with.
Wow.
I did, it was very interesting, I wish we could take all of you up there, 'cause you would understand.
Great night for going up on the roof.
Not tonight.
Great night.
It was a beautiful day, the day I did it. Um.
Did you have to climb up the ladder?
I did.
Am I?
It wasn't, well, it was, it's like attached to the wall.
Oh, okay, it wasn't like a ladder that got put up there.
And it's inside too, it's like.
Oh, it's inside?
Up a hatch, yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
So whenever Chris is here, we make sure we have the dry erase board.
Yeah.
Yep, lots of different colors of markers.
Appreciate it, thank you.
So.
And we have some pictures too.
We do have some pictures. So um, since that time though, um, Chris and Hugo had some conversations and talked about some things in our proposing, uh, moving forward with the first step of the next step in this process. And Chris is gonna explain a little bit more of the thinking and the reasoning behind moving forward with that sooner rather than later. So, I'll turn it over to Chris to go tell us whatever he wants to tell us, and I have some photos too.
Thank you.
Get to that when you need to.
Yep, if you would, put the pictures up, we'll just recap where we left things in the October meeting. At the October meeting, we agreed to proceed with three options that we wanted to leave on the roof through the winter to see which one fared the best through the uh, the heating equaling cycles, so that we can make a decision in the spring with how we move forward.
Okay.
So, option one is here, um, and I'm, I'm gonna draw real quick just to hopefully tie in with, with the pictures. If you look at our roof edge, you may remember, that's our edge. We have a situation where we have this little piece of metal on the edge, that's called a gravel stop. And the roof membrane, so the, the rubber roof, comes out here to the roof edge, comes up on this gravel stop, and that right there is the failure point, where the adhesive between your old existing roof membrane has delaminated, good use of the word, from the gravel stop. And it's doing that pretty consistently around the whole facility, so that is a.
Oh, oh, it is, it, around the whole thing?
It is, not, not everywhere, but there's, there's quite a few areas.
Uh-huh. Are, are there areas that are definitely worse than others? And to what do you attribute that? The way the sun hits, or?
Probably a combination of factors, how much sun, how much shade, how wet it is all the time, the shady areas don't dry out as much.
Okay.
Um, so we, with that happening, water can get in here and then get down into the fascia system, which leads to the problems that have been discussed. So, when we met last time, we talked about the solution for this, and the solution, let's get rid of the little water drips there. The solution is a couple of steps. Number one, we have to re-glue that, no matter what, and then number two, we have some options with how we treat that joint. The first option is to put something called butyl tape over this to bridge from the roof membrane to the gravel stop. The second option is to put a, an actual roof patch, which is a larger piece of roofing material across here to bridge that gap. And then the third option that we talked about with Richard from Quinn Evans, was actually to increase the size of this gravel stop and use that as a cap out here and cover the old gravel stop, which gives us a little bit more height on the edge of the roof. There's some advantages to that, but we'd have to go into that right now. So the pictures that we have are the pictures of the three options. Option one, that was the butyl tape on the, you know, basically across the whole image, you see that white strip.
And how are you saying, butyl or bugle?
Butyl.
Butyl, it's.
Oh, is it down there?
B T Y.
Oh, right there, thank you, okay, thanks.
Oh, I see what you're pointing.
So there is a self-adhesive tape, it's used commonly for exterior applications like this, and that just goes down to bridge that gap. Option two, if you would go forward, is the roofing material patch, so that's the gray material. The white on the right is where that butyl tape came across, uh, the gray is a ten-foot strip of roof patch material.
And this is much more thick than the tape and more stiff too, so it's almost like, I don't know, like a piece of cardboard sort of, but.
But earth material.
Yeah.
What, what is it made of?
Uh, it is made out of EPDM refilled material.
Oh, okay, okay. And um, I'm sorry, does this go over butyl tape or instead of?
Nope, instead of.
Okay.
Is it capped? I'm kind of unclear as to the shape of it.
It's, it's about an eight-inch wide strip that is laid down right across that gap. So it, it's flexible, it comes on a roll.
Okay.
And they, they roll it out, and then it bridges that gap from that gravel stop over onto the roof membrane.
And it doesn't shrink and expand during, regarding, regarding the weather?
A little bit, all of these materials do, a little bit, which leads to challenges. But this one, because it's a wider piece, has a lot more adhesion on both sides of this to bridge that gap.
Gotcha.
And then, our next picture, option three, uh, we'll call this the belt and suspenders approach because it, it adds an extra layer of protection. That's where now, and I have to explain a little bit more here. The right side is the finished product, the left side was during the installation. After we adhered the edge of the existing roof back down, then we installed a piece of metal, the new gravel stop, and that's, that's what this is right here, you can just see that edge and it comes up to there. And then they were unrolling the next section of tape, and then that's what you see here on top of the new metal edge. So, those are the three options. Now, we'll go through the winter, and we'll see where we're at in the spring with what held up the best, so.
Did you try all three?
All three have been installed in ten-foot sections.
Gotcha.
So that's the good news. We came here, we talked about it in October, we did it, and now we'll go through the winter and see where we're at in the spring. What we realized as we were preparing to do this, in talking with our roofer, with Tara and with Hugo, is that regardless of which of these options the library decides to move forward with, there's a common theme here that has to be done no matter what, and that is this little bit right here, where we have to re-adhere this edge down. So, that was when, you know, I think we were standing up on the roof at the time with Hugo and with the roofer, we said, well, we might as well put a price together for this, and if we can move forward with this initial repair sooner rather than waiting until spring, that takes away the immediate issue of the water getting in and down into the roof system. So, no matter what we choose in the spring, option one, two, or three, regardless of that, we still have to do this step to go around the whole perimeter and seal it back down. So that led to putting together the proposal that we now have in front of you tonight.
Could I just, when you did those three experiments, I'm going back to Danny's question about what the elements were, what brought this, to this conclusion, did you use, like, so all of them are using sun and shade, so that you have, or did you?
We chose the northeast corner of the building on the east face,
Okay.
and in talking with Hugo, that was where he thought it was some of the worst area where it's delaminating.
Okay.
And it does seem like at maybe one of the areas where there's a more extreme level of shade and sun.
Gotcha.
Get great afternoon sun there, but in the morning, it is all shade.
Right, okay.
It's like those redwood trees, yeah.
Yeah. And I, I was standing up on the roof the morning that we did this, it was a cold morning, and until the sun got over the trees, it was freezing out there.
Yeah.
And then the sun came through and warmed up real quick.
Yeah.
That, that's probably why this area is so bad, is because of that extreme, that happens quickly.
And the amount of the proposal, uh, forty-seven thousand dollars, that is over our purchasing guideline cliff of twenty-five thousand dollars that would require board approval if we're not going to put this up for a bid. The reason I don't think we should put this up for a bid, there's a couple of exceptions to that, is this is a professional architectural construction service. We already have this relationship with Rewald, and Chris and Richard are so familiar with this problem. I trust Rewald to advise us of the, the best thing to do. And I'm glad that Chris has brought in this third part, or another party, Artisan Building Services, to look at this problem with fresh eyes. So, that's why it's coming before you all tonight.
Is there any warranty on this?
So the new solution, uh, in a minimum twelve months, yes, and I can talk with Artisan and see if they would be willing to accept that.
'Cause it's mostly labor.
Yeah, this is mostly labor, yep. It's, it's a lot of cleaning, because you have to peel back the existing, we found that there's, you know, lots of leaves and gum that is accumulated in there, so there's a lot of labor just to get it cleaned out. And then, we're going through and we're cutting a very nice clean edge in that membrane, 'cause right now it kind of goes all over the place, and put a nice clean edge, it makes for a much nicer solution.
So if you do that now and glue that down, that's the point of failure. Do you think it'll hold through the winter?
Yes.
Or will it have to be re-glued in certain locations? You might, it might have to be.
It, there may be a couple points that pop, but I would be comfortable saying ninety to ninety-five percent will.
Yeah. And no matter what you do with respect to adding on the additional layer, you have to do the gluing first to at least repair that, and then you can figure out what's the right way of the three to finish it off.
I think we all agreed after going through the installation process that we didn't think option one is the best because that butyl tape is in. Using option two with the roof membrane patch is definitely more robust than option one. And then, you know, the third option just brings in that, really the two steps, there's there's that higher gravel stop. And that metal actually puts a clamping force down on the patch that has happened, which will keep it intact.
So this piece that we're talking about here is forty some odd thousand. Do you have a feel for what the cost will be to now add on the repair that you want to do in the spring to finish off the job?
I, we haven't priced that yet, um, so let me let me do that, I would be happy.
Well, it sounds like we have to decide to do this, I'm I'm just trying to get a sense for what the whole job will cost eventually, that's all.
Yeah, I I don't have a good feeling the cost delta between the three will be significant because of that gravel stop piece, like from the third option, that that will add quite a bit to it.
Is the product that you're using to re-adhere different from the product that was used originally that failed?
So.
Perhaps you don't consider it a failure?
That that's a good question, that's a very fair question. It it's a little challenging to answer because when the original roof membrane was put down, I don't know what product they used, some of this goes back, what, forty, fifty plus years, I think.
They they didn't change the entire membrane when they went there?
No.
Okay.
And no, what happened is that is that a coating went down on top of the existing membrane. And the coating, when it spans from the membrane onto that metal edge, it it went over it, but then there was movement underneath that caused it to pop.
And we wouldn't have any records on what was, probably not that far back.
Exact material or from not further back than the twenty?
But what I can say is the roofer looked at it and said, yeah, this this is a normal roofing material, so normal roofing adhesives
Okay.
apply, it's not it's not something special or unique. The coating on top is is different, but the actual roof membrane that's below the coating is is a standard material.
Okay.
So yeah, they found that after they cleaned it, they primed it properly and per manufacturer specifications, and then used new glue and adhere just fine.
Okay. And you'll recall that if, when when somebody reached out to the product manufacturer, they said, well, it was the installation and the.
No, it was. They were cross, yeah.
So it's, you know, hard to say, this would be a different company doing the
Yes.
uh, install, so we have that on our side too.
Yeah, that's true.
So we will go over the budget for this, for what we have in the capital improvements program?
We have a hundred and thousand in the um, capital improvements program for roofing, so this part won't.
No, but.
Go over, but another phase, yeah. Now, we will have, April first will be the beginning of fiscal year, and so I can't, if I was thinking we probably wouldn't do anything much before April first because of weather, so we would be in a new fiscal year and we can budget more accurately, you know, maybe more conversations with Chris, we can budget more accurately for the next phase in the twenty four, twenty five.
And then, so then another reason for us to hopefully have our millage approved.
Yes, definitely, yeah.
When when will you plan to go back and check on it in the spring? After April first?
I suspect we'll look at it through the winter a few times when the weather allows, and we'll we'll be up there in March and April to see how it's going.
Put a weather cam up there.
Watch through the winter.
Tara doesn't have to climb up these.
I'm just thinking of on your behalf.
It was fun.
Yeah, we won't go up there when there's six inches of snow on.
Or night late today.
Yeah.
So my overall thought is it it has to be done right from the start. The rice will get into all kinds of things that have to be redone.
Yeah.
That's true.
Well, that's what we're essentially doing now, we're doing something that was poorly thought out back in two thousand and nineteen and so.
And yeah, this is mostly labor, so that's it's expensive.
But this step is to um, clean out and then.
And prevent further damage during the winter.
Right, so that, yeah.
Stop the water from getting in. That seems like a win-win.
I I think it seems like the logical step to take.
It sounds like the second step is going to be very expensive, that's why it's so tight for sure.
That's.
Well, and the alternative choices that um, yeah, seem I don't know, it seems like like if we put this layer on and then this layer on and then that layer on, then it won't come out, so. Yeah. But I I feel like we have to do this stuff. I would be a paper looking forward.
There's a motion that you could read if you wanted to take that action. That's on page thirty seven of our packet.
I have it right here, everybody need to read it. Let's go ahead and know if you find it.
Thirty seven, hold on.
I got it here, just. Oh, it's just, you're almost there, yeah.
I moved to approve the proposal to conduct repairs to the perimeter roof edge to Frank Rewald and Sons, three oh three East Third Street, Suite three hundred, Rochester, Michigan, four eight three oh seven, and Artisan Building Services, four nine one six Lor Drive, Watertown, Michigan, four eight three two nine for forty seven thousand dollars.
And is there a second?
A second?
Oh, you go.
No, no, you go.
Well then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think it's great to just get moving on this and and Keith, like you said, to do it the right way.
We're gonna have to, otherwise it's it'll just keep coming, coming back.
And and will you also let us know about warranties? Because I think that's gonna be really.
That was the issue, I think that the warranty expired and then all of a sudden it happened, because.
Well, and then there was this.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, that's just it, yeah. Because I know in twenty nineteen, we spent meeting after meeting, meeting people.
A lot of research, yeah.
So.
And the truth is that we take a lot of pride in the services that we provide here, and we won't be able to do that if we don't have
Right.
a roof over our heads.
Right, I think the pandemic was a problem there because, you know, we were all all over the place in twenty twenty when we probably could have taken advantage of a warranty, but then for the next couple of years, everything was just so strange.
Well, they did offer a warranty, so we thought that, you know, listening to the professionals, they they said, this is it, and so.
Um, and what is what is our timeline now moving forward?
They say Thanksgiving, next week?
So we are prepared to start next week. We are prepared to start next week. This is partly weather dependent, you can't work every day like today, obviously. But um, we're figuring it's about twenty to twenty-five days of total work.
Oh, wow, that's a lot.
So it's, you know, that that's with like a crew of, I think, three people here for those days.
It's gonna be unpleasant work. Was there something that we needed to file to document the fact that it's not going out for bids or? I can't remember.
The minutes will reflect it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And quite frankly, this is part of a larger project
Okay.
in which we've already engaged.
Right.
You know?
Okay.
So, yeah.
Um, okay, well then I guess you're you'll reach out to Hugo and he's on vacation on this week.
Then let me also, just to be clear, is, will um, Artisan also be engaged in the overall, the big project?
They can be, yes.
Oh, so it's not this, it's is that typically who you work with on these kinds of projects?
I work with them quite a bit on very specialty, we'll say funny roofing projects.
It's funny, that's a funny term for this, not funny.
So I think what you're saying is for the second step, you're gonna put it out for bids, and they're gonna be one of the people that will bid on it, and then you'll see what the what the bids look like.
I absolutely do have that.
Okay.
I think the second step of this is easier to quantify in a bidding environment, where this is very much a like a unique situation, would be difficult to do that.
Okay, all right, well, thank you for your support of this, and Chris and Hugo will look forward with getting this worked on.
One other question, why is that called a gravel stop?
Good question.
So traditionally roofs had roof gravel on them to hold the membrane down. And that was a metal edge that was traditionally installed on roofs to prevent the gravel from going over the edges on the flat roof. Now, with today's roof membranes, you rarely put gravel on roofs anymore.
The weight.
And they're they're held down with glue or mechanical fasteners, whereas, you know, twenty, thirty, forty years ago, that was very common.
Okay, now you said earlier also that there's some advantage to putting a higher gravel stop. What is that advantage since there's no gravel apparently?
Also a good question. So that was something that Richard, the architect, brought up as an item for consideration. And it would probably be, it would be easier to walk you around up on the roof and and show you, but there are some strange edge conditions with some of the angles on this roof, where that gravel stop isn't a nice clean break anymore because of the way the insulation is coming up or, you know, some strange angle. And if that gravel stop were made like two inches higher, that would then give a very nice clean consistent edge around the entire perimeter.
So is it more, is that?
Yes, it sounds.
It it's partly aesthetic, but if we're using it like I talked about there in the third option to help hold the whole system down, it it would be very useful for that, whereas the current one, you know, there's places where that membrane just goes right over it. I can get some pictures of that next time.
This sounds like something we should discuss for part two, you know, I got it, thank you.
No, it's a very good question.
And will, I guess in the timing of this, will we be able to discuss these options in between now and April, or will we ultimately have to wait until April to see the condition of what we what we see there?
So I think what we can.
Before we can really look at.
I think what we can do is put together a bid package, bid the three options among multiple roofing companies. And that way, when we get to April, then we're in a position, the library can make the decision, the information will move ahead. And then we're not starting that process in April, we can do that through the winter.
Okay, and then that way we'll also see what's going on on the roof over the winter, okay.
That makes good sense then.
All right, any other questions for Chris?
Okay, thank you so much.
Stay dry tonight.
Yeah, you too.
Thanks so much, yes.
Right, thank you, we'll be touched, take care, happy Thanksgiving.
Yes.
No, it's kind of a, yeah.
Today was just a very unpleasant day.
Didn't, I didn't really hear much driving rain.
No, it was that's a smaller, small little drops that are just.
But they got over it, so we won't have it in on Thursday.
Yeah, which is nice.
Just cold, their temperatures, yeah, but that's what we're used to.
Thank you for that.
You know, whenever you have a home thing, you get three quotes. Low one, there's a high one, you inevitably take the one in the middle because that compromises. And that's where this is going, so.
Yeah, the butyl tape, or not butyl, the the cover tape.
Yeah, that's that sounds like just, let's go back and do the same thing that didn't work before, so, but we can talk about that later some.
I'd really be interested in um, the aesthetics of the third option.
That that third option is gonna be very expensive.
Very expensive, I agree.
Yes.
I don't think aesthetically it really makes much difference, you can't really see it.
No, you can't.
But I also noticed coming in the um, front entrance way last week, I think it was, I was noticing. There's a um, a damaged area, what looks like to me, as you're walking in on the left side about halfway back or halfway in.
Yes, the cedar fascia is delaminating, yes, that's right by those roof scuppers.
Yes.
Yes.
Because I started looking up and thinking.
Yes, and you may recall that Richard Renaud had talked about um.
Extending the scuppers a bit so that the water doesn't end up getting behind.
And that's exactly the problem that's happening is that cedar fascia delaminates because the moisture is very nearby.
Well, and the way it was dripping, the way the water was dripping, you could see why this was happening because it's very uneven and it was all pooling there.
Hugo and Richard are going to recommend changing that cedar fascia to some other material that's not wood.
Yeah, because it will just keep on happening.
The woodpeckers get in there and.
Exactly, insects. The cedar is very soft, and so it's beautiful, but, yeah.
Yeah. And there are some options, um, so that'll be another conversation.
Yeah, and again, you know, it's about sustainability, and um, so we'll have to.
But I will pass on, because we have cedar, our house is all cedar, so um, I'll let you know, because we do have the woodpeckers and the bees, but we have a company that comes in and and.
Stains it with some kind of.
Yeah, they're silly, they, well, they fill the holes and they do something else, and so, and then I talk to the woodpeckers and then everything's fine.
Oh, so some type of conversation.
I have a bird whisperer, I have a bird whisperer, yes.
Cinderella.
That's fun.
Um, okay, wonderful, well, let's uh, let's move on now and discuss the nominating committee appointment and um.
It's page forty one.
Forty one, forty.
Forty, okay, so um, here we during the, it is always the November meeting where um.
This is considered the board's annual meeting.
Oh.
According to the bylaws.
I read that in the bylaws tonight.
Oh, well, there you go. The board president presents the nominating committee to select officers for the next year. And um, I have decided to, again, appoint Judy and Joan to continue as our nominating committee and um. You all have.
Oh, so, and I will say that when we start doing the bylaws, that's one thing that always bothers me, because when we have an election year, um, if we have anyone new to the board and they come on the board and it's all of a sudden, it's not, you know, now we're doing an election and they don't have the opportunity to really feel out what's going on and and all these things, and so we do that, so we've been um, uh, vacillating between November and December on putting on new people um, in these offices, um, because it just doesn't, it doesn't often make sense to do that. And the other thing is, is that the the different boards that we have changing those midway through, and it's just, it's a little bit difficult, particularly personnel, because we have personnel at different committees, yes. So um, we felt that it was important, particularly because of what is going to be going on this coming year with the millage and all of these things, that it would be important, um, and plus we have still, you're still fairly new, you just celebrated your first year, um. And we just felt that with continuity, that it would be important to keep, if we all agreed to it, to keep the same names and the same faces in the the positions that they're in, and so we we talked among ourselves and we've all, we've agreed. But we then decided that we would let you know in case you had any issues or questions or something, how we came about this decision, um, and not have the election until December, which would be our December seventeen, I don't know, whatever the date is.
Nineteen.
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 So that's what we did, but normally what we would do is, um, which I think this is a very nice way to do this, is to give you a month's time to think about it and and take it in. We've oftentimes just come to the meeting that night, but you'd always get your board packet beforehand, so it's not. We've oftentimes just come to the meeting that night, but you'd always get your board packet beforehand, so it's not a surprise, but again, it's just. I told Danny and and that your first year, you're just, you know, you're you're waiting through things and you're you're getting used to the way things work and. All the different policies and all the different committees and all the different people you meet, and then all of a sudden, it's like, okay, election's up. And so I'm delighted that if we all agree that Danny is going to stay as president to lead us through this another year, so.
Absolutely.
And, yes, oh, go ahead.
And it's not unusual for. Officers to continue for at least two years, especially.
I'm good with this slate of officers, I'm fine with it, yeah.
Good, well, it would be, I think it's important to have Shane here too, so I'm hoping that at our December nineteenth meeting that we're all in on hand to make that decision. And then I'm also very pleased that on the next page that Danny has looked at the standing committee appointments. And has provided that with us for us as well so that we can, and I'm I'm absolutely thrilled and we made that decision a few years ago that there were certain. Certain committees that we needed all of you here because that is where we make investments, that's where we have perhaps a fundraising event and then also. The biggest thing that we spend the money on other than salaries is the building and the grounds, and so it was silly for for a small group of people getting together and then. Answering questions that we had already spent so much time working on at the meeting that we're having here, so. I think that just was a wonderful suggestion, I forget who did it, I'll say Joan did it.
I'll take credit.
Give Joan the credit, anyway, so I think that's lovely that we also know what our committee assignments are going to be, so.
Yes, however, if anybody feels that they haven't enjoyed being on one of these committees or would like to, you know. Check out another one, let's have that conversation too.
Right.
I want to make sure that everybody is. Comfortable in in these roles, but also. If you feel that there is something that you have to offer to another committee, I, you know, the best part about this board is that it is small. And that makes us a real working board, so and and that is why it's so important that some of our committees are made up of all of us.
Absolutely.
Because we really do get the work done.
Absolutely.
So I did want to put that out there.
Let me make sure I fully understand the conversation, so you're saying the committee assignments, we're gonna carry these over for twenty twenty four. Am I understanding that right?
This is, yes, so there'll be no, unless I'm misspeaking, I don't believe that there's going to be any changes on the committee assignments. However, that doesn't mean that, you know, that if we have four members of of a committee, we have to consider it an open meeting. Because that's considered a majority of our meetings, so we always limit it to two and usually the president has the option of attending those meetings as well. The ones that are all, all those committees that are all, it's posted that this is an open meeting, so anyone can show up, anyone from the general public can show up to those and and we follow the rule of the law. So if for instance, for instance, Danny is not able to go to a meeting and there's something that you'd like to go to. Let us know and then we'll we'll do that, so that's an easy, easy peasy thing to do. And then for the friends, I know that the friends they meet once a month, Joy, and you know, if there's a time that you can't meet it, you were very good about reaching out. And, yeah, you were very good about reaching out and I think Shane took one and, yeah, so people do that, so we're all working together, we're all working. With each other and and we want to do the best, so.
But yeah, and some, as you know, are sort of there for, in case something comes up. For instance, the art committee, early in our tenures. Judy and I had issues, you know, someone wanted a piece of artwork up in the library, well, you know. We have certain guidelines, so that's why we have an art committee, but it's been years since the art committee ever met.
And like the Cranbrook CPO Troy Committee, that I think will meet next year because I think. Once, once every three years. Three years, yeah, all those agreements are on next year, I think.
Once every three years.
Yeah.
So Keith and Joy, if you're still on that committee, committee, you'll see how that works.
Right, and the scholarship committee is is, I think you meet two or three times, that's it, and so the big one coming up is the personnel one, so.
Yeah, personnel.
And building of grounds is very.
And building grounds, of course, yes. And and the investment committee will be talking in January, Schwartz will be here, so. But I love having this early on so that if there's an issue or if there's something that you want to try different or something, it's not locked in yet, so, and just just knowing.
I don't have a problem with it, I just wanted to make sure I understood, because I'm, I'm having a little trouble following the conversation because somehow I feel there's like.
Yeah.
There's like something else to it that maybe I'm not quite seeing, but that's just okay, I'm good with it, so.
No, this is basically just saying that nothing will change for the next year as we.
I'm good with it, I just wanted to make sure I understood, so.
You know, as we go through.
Yeah.
Right.
Working through a lot of stuff.
And I think we just wanted to do it almost as a courtesy, the two of you, because you are, you, again, a one year and just to know that this is what we do, but.
No problem.
But I would say that when we get to the bylaws, which I know is our next discussion, and when we get to that part about where the annual meeting is, I I. It bothers me that we have an annual meeting in November because we have it right after the election and if there is somebody new to the board, it's like, okay, what have I just started? So it doesn't give, there's no grace period every four years, so. But that's something that we have the opportunity, if we want to change and address, we can do.
So current officers remain the same and current committees remain the same, that's the proposals on the table. And you're proposing voting on that in December.
Do we want to vote on it this today, was that our intent?
Well. Oh.
I don't know, I don't remember what, I.
I don't see it. I think you could do it either way.
Okay.
If you want to handle it and get it done, you could, or you could, did you want to wait for Shane?
We could wait till Shane. If he's, yeah, I'm hoping to, I don't know, I, that was, I thought our discussion, but I I could be.
You know, I'm not sure if we need to.
Wait, I mean, we don't have to.
No?
No.
I I I don't know.
But Shane got this ahead of time and he's very good about getting in touch with you if there was any concern, so.
And he he did, well. But the memo here only says that the the nominating committee would be presented.
Right, okay. So I don't mind holding off.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. We'll just put that on the agenda for voting.
Okay, and then I can reach out to Shane and tell him.
We'll have a proper motion.
What's being proposed.
Yes, tell him the date again.
Yeah. Uh, what do we say it was?
The nineteenth.
The nineteenth.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you very much to Joan and Judy for serving on this committee. Okay, we are going to move on to our bylaws review. We are calling this new business, but this is something that we are going to begin doing regularly is taking some time during each board meeting to. Review and discuss if needed our bylaws, just so that we're all more better versed in them. Yeah, so I'll turn it over.
Okay. Yeah, Danny and I talked prior to this meeting and thought we would spend maybe fifteen minutes per meeting on this section of the agenda. Some of these articles are longer than others and might have more discussion, so, but we thought fifteen minutes might be a good amount of time. There are seven articles total, so it'll take us seven meetings to go through all of them. That's math I can do. This won't be, the policy committee has already reviewed these bylaws and does so on an annual basis to look for any changes or updates. And I don't think bylaws should change a lot anyway, so this process is not meant as. You know, we're not gonna debate these or look for things that need to be changed, this is more of just us all talking about these and developing this common understanding and knowledge of our bylaws. However, having said that, if something does come up that we think needs to be changed, like maybe the committee appointments when it happens or though not the annual meeting. I will keep track of that and make notes and then when the policy committee comes around for their annual review in late summer, early fall, we can have a discussion about that at that time. So I, we're starting with article one. And this is on page forty four. Article one, section one says, well, first I wanted to. Talk a little bit about bylaws and what they are supposed to do. There is a Library of Michigan trustee manual that I think all of you have in paper. And if you don't have it in paper, you can always find it online. And it has a very extensive chapter on bylaws and what they are supposed to do, what their purpose is. And I'll just read this very basic definition, that bylaws are the basic rules relating to the library board as an organization. They define the primary characteristics of the library board and describe how the board functions. Good bylaws can act as a user manual on the operation of a productive board. Incomplete or badly written bylaws can cause conflict and hamper the operation of the board and the library. So that's a little bit about what bylaws do, it's your operating rules. So article one, section one says that the library board of Bloomfield Township Public Library shall consist of six trustees elected as provided by the laws of the state of Michigan, so. Check, we've done that. And the law that's being referred to is P A one sixty four, which is the law that establishes a township library. Section two says the responsibilities of the library board of trustees as defined in Michigan compiled laws, public act three ninety seven point two oh five include. Make and adopt such bylaws, rules and regulations for their own guidance and for the government of the library and reading room as may be expedient. The exclusive control of the expenditure of all monies collected to the credit of the library fund. And of the construction of any library building and of the supervision, care and custody of the grounds, rooms or buildings constructed, leased or set apart for that purpose. To purchase or lease grounds to occupy, lease or erect an appropriate library building or buildings for the use of said library. To appoint a suitable librarian and necessary assistants and fix their compensation and to remove such appointees. So those are your duties. And then section three says, in the event of a vacancy, the board shall appoint a qualified person to hold the vacant office until the next general November election. The appointed trustee shall be selected by a process as outlined in the Library Board of Trustees' Approved Bloomfield Township Public Library Board of Trustees' Vacancy Procedure. And we have done that very recently, and yes. And as Linda and I were remarking, you all have been, not been on that other side of that process yet, you've certainly been on the side of the candidate, but not yet on the side of selection, so. That may or may not come up, who knows, hopefully it doesn't, I want everybody to stay. So you may have wondered, I don't know if you wondered, well, what is the trustee vacancy procedure?
Yeah, because I looked for it once, but I couldn't find it.
I know, it's not in the the information that I have given you, but I made some printouts.
Also, I was just wondering, it says appoint a suitable librarian, we don't really appoint a librarian, we appoint a director, can we change the words or is that?
That's the law.
That's a quotation, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it is kind of funny language though, isn't it?
It is, yeah.
Even though the term reading room, I think, is very old fashioned too, yeah.
Okay.
So I wanted to share with you the vacancy procedure, this is quite detailed and we.
We know it well.
We usually follow it, yeah, we follow it to the letter most likely. So that's for your information and I think it works pretty well.
It does.
Okay.
It's sort of like a job, you know, a job vacancy.
Okay.
A posting goes up and people apply and interviews happen, appointment is made.
You know, I was talking to my, my daughter, she just started working last May at Caterpillar, so she's been there a little over a month. And she's gotten involved with, you know, interviewing and mentoring new people coming on, I mean, she's only been there a year and she was talking about talking to new. You know, people just finishing up in college and interviewing for jobs, and I said to her, you know, I bet you it feels good to be on the other side of the table, and she said, you're telling me.
Yes, it really does.
That's funny.
Yes.
I find that process to be just fascinating, I love doing hiring, I think it's a lot of fun.
It's stressful for the people doing it, who are the interviewees.
It is, yeah. I also made some, you know, I looked up. Act, I think it's like section three ninety seven two oh five, because it it is very explicit in that law. How many trustees there are, when they are elected, so all of those things. You, I don't know, we kind of take them for granted, but they are sold out in this law, yeah.
And this is specific to P A one sixty four?
So it could be, P A one sixty four applies to city, village and township libraries, so obviously. You kind of have to wade through it and look for the ones, the sections that apply to a township library. And you all are a governing board, you are not an advisory board, that's a distinction as well. So Birmingham is under the city.
Yeah.
They're a city department, but their their board members are elected by the.
They had a lot of records out.
Right, because it was, they were all listed in the Eagle. And they were asked to give their age. They might, maybe they are a P A one sixty four.
Yeah, I was thinking that, I was wondering that.
Well, I'm not gonna do that. I think when they have a vacancy though, it's different from hours and everything.
Didn't you just turn thirty nine?
They, for some reason, I think the city fills a vacancy.
I I don't know.
I don't know either.
Because City of Southfield, the mayor appoints that board and they are a city department. And Birmingham is also considered a city department, but maybe they are, maybe they're not a charter library, I think when you're established by the city charter.
Gotcha.
Because they were running, weren't they, that was in the Eagle, they were running for elections.
They were, it's a competitive election, yeah.
Yeah, I saw a lot of records. Marcy Felstein or something, is she, that's the one I saw, Wendy, Wendy.
Wendy Freeman. Wendy Freeman, yeah.
Could I ask a quick question, I'm just on the very last page, what did we amend on ten seventeen twenty twenty three?
I was wondering the same thing.
We just made a couple of very minor typo corrections.
Oh, okay, all right.
It was part of the whole policy review.
Did I, did I, oh, I did say, I do remember it now, okay, and then the one I know in twenty twenty two is when we had a change when. The state said that you no longer can have, we can no longer, yeah, open, yeah, yeah.
Oh, is that, okay, the open, yeah.
Yeah, which, by the way, I attended an open meetings act webinar a week or so ago, just to make sure we're trying everything right, which we are. And there is legislation, I can't remember where it is, but they are working on trying to amend that that. Part of it to say that you can attend remotely for any reason.
They should, they really should.
And the advice I was given previously was that. Obviously, when you attend remotely, you can't vote, so you can't be a voting member. And I was told you should just say, don't attend, because the the desire or the urge to speak in the meeting might be too great.
Oh.
So I thought maybe this would be a nice time to talk about that, this person said that we could. Allow members to attend, but you would be considered a member of the public, attend virtually. So you wouldn't be able to vote, you wouldn't even be able to really comment on anything except during public comment.
I don't think that makes sense.
But if you want to stay in the loop on a meeting and and join it from afar.
And this is from a vote, you're talking about a voting meeting.
Yes, so like this meeting, like Shane could maybe attend.
Not like a building, yeah. Right, but he wouldn't be able to vote, he wouldn't be able to say anything except during public comment. You wouldn't be, you wouldn't be counted as attending.
Right, so what's the difference between that and watching later?
He would just be staying in the loop. Well, how many, during COVID, how many months were we on, all on Zoom? At least a year, at least a year, yeah.
Well, and that kind of begs the question of like, then, then. It's like going back to work physically at work, you know, we, you've proven it can be done and effectively managed. Over Zoom or a virtual conference situation, so I don't understand why. The law was either reenacted or it it was just.
My brother, who, John, who used to work up in Lansing, he had his last article in the Repressed last Sunday, but he, the reason why is because people became lazy. You could not be on the screen, you could be making bread, you could be being on your Peloton and you weren't paying attention.
Not paying attention.
You also, I mean, the whole, I mean, teachers were aghast, they, the very first time to Zoom, they were still in their pajamas in bed. And there's, there has to be some respect, we're a government entity and there has to be some respect with these meetings, you know, we come, we don't. We're not coming with our pajamas on and we're and we're, and the public sees you, so if you're if you're constantly on Zoom and the public doesn't see that. You're actually engaging physically and I'm, I'm, you can see I get heated about this because I've been on so many Zoom meetings where they're in the lazy boy and they're falling asleep and they're going like this and it drives me crazy and I'm thinking. But wait, I made the effort to be here and I mean, I can understand if you're sick or you're in the military or even if there's, that, you know, work calls you away, I can understand those things, but I don't. It bothers me. It bothers me that people just assume that if it's Zoom that they can, they can act any way they want. And I've been in so many meetings where I don't even see the person's face.
Right.
And they, and sometimes, and the one person who was in the Lazy Boy, this was at a, a, a big meeting, you could, she hadn't turned the sound off. And then you have the people, you know, now we're so used to it, and you go to call on them, and they, they're like trying to get their mute, and they're not. So it's, it's for the government, it just bothers me that we are not part and parcel and, and present, so.
There's lots of.
That's, I mean, and I'm sorry, I got on my bandwagon.
I, I think, and that's fine, right on. I mean, I totally agree with what you're saying.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's just, it's just, I don't know, it's a little, it's, it's a pet peeve of mine.
So I'm hearing we don't wanna allow Zoom attendance.
Oh, I don't wanna.
No, I think what we're doing is great, I think, or, but being able to, I mean, I appreciate for those informational meetings to be able to call in, we do appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Right, yes, yes.
Right, it's just when there's a vote.
Right, right.
Yes.
That, that um.
Well, you're still working, so, I mean, so the informational meetings are good for you.
Yeah, it, it, it. Right, and now that I'm going down to Dearborn four or five times a week, it's so.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, it's been very convenient for me.
Okay, yeah, so it's good that that works out, yeah.
But that's why, um, so that's what my brother, 'cause I asked him. And so that was one of the reasons, so they just, they wanted the integrity of that you're being counted, your, people voted for us to be here, not to um, you know, be smoking a cigarette with no, no vision of us on the thing going, yeah. Drinking wine, or, you know.
I think it's funny that before the pandemic, we did have board members call in.
Right.
On occasion, when they were out of town and a board meeting was happening. It was very, we didn't think much of it.
Right. Nothing.
And then the pandemic happened, and then we wouldn't have been able to go on without those, those computer and phone meetings.
Right, right.
And then they had to say, oh no, you can't do, it was like they weren't paying attention, and then they were, and.
Right.
Well, I think they saw, I just think that, I think they had enough of those bad examples, and the bad examples set the, set the tone, and
Yeah.
And if you're not even going to get out of your pajamas, and you're an elected official, and my brother saw it all the time, he, I think he's going to be writing a book about something, I don't know. But um, you know, you just, or, or on your Lazy Boy, I don't know, it just, it drives me.
I would not be on my Lazy Boys, and I would be dressed.
Right, right, well, I mean, at least from here on.
If I could be on Zoom when I need to.
If you ever see, if you ever have the opportunity to see people who are on the news, from here up, they're very professional from here down, 'cause you can't see below the, the waist, they're wearing jeans.
Yeah, yeah.
There was a wonderful, New Yorker magazine covered, about two years ago. A lady, you know, you know how the New Yorker magazine covers are, so, she's sitting, and the top half, she's just very impeccable.
Sure. Yeah, yeah.
And the rest of the, her was, she was in jeans, and the rest of the apartment had t-shirts, chuckle over the floor.
They slipperless.
Yeah, yeah, that's too funny, yeah, from here up, you, you know, you see what's going on, so.
It was, that was a really clever cover, yeah.
It is funny.
Yeah, and, and relatable, I mean, that's, you know, that's what people are doing, you know.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. I bet that happened to, I mean, I admire this man so much, but poor Jeffrey Toobin, people
Hmm.
Yep.
Make mistakes, get sloppy, and pay heavy prices, so, let's just.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sure, the court of public opinion is here.
Yes, this is, this show up, so.
Right, right. Yeah.
All right, well, Article One, Section One, Two, and Three, very, very basic establishment of items of this board and how you come to be here.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay, so, we're gonna do, you're gonna have it in a red box, and you're just gonna.
And what your purposes.
Yeah, does that work?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good, yeah.
It's great.
Do you know what we'll be discussing?
Great, okay. So next month will be Article Two.
You got it.
That's a long article.
Yours is smart, John.
Saying, but you'll.
And how many are going to be in Article?
Although I may not be here in December, so there's that, so.
And you'll still keep putting them in the board packet. Yes, I will put the bylaws in the board packet each time, and I will move that box to highlight the article that we'll talk about.
Okay.
So you won't be at the December meeting?
So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna ask, uh, it's, it's fifty-fifty at this point, if I'll be traveling, so is there anyone else that cannot make the December meeting?
I will be here.
I will.
I'll be here.
I will.
And I think Shane will be too.
Okay.
So you're up. Okay, all right, well, thank you for that conversation, and we'll keep that going. I'm gonna put it under unfinished business each time.
Good.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Great. Um, okay, well, we can go ahead and just skip right down to other. Is there anything else that anybody wants to discuss?
I just wanted to point out something, um, we are a library, but I do highly applaud bookstores, because it's very important, and I know it's not a competition. But I was in the New Schuler's bookstore on Orchard Lake. It's, I, I've always gone to the one in Lansing. This is fabulous. They took over Pet Supplies Plus.
Yeah.
Their, their holiday selection is amazing. Um, the staff is knowledgeable, wonderful, and place that you should put that, that for um the job. Um, 'cause well, all of them are part-time.
Oh, that's good to hear.
And um, anyway, it's just, I, I hope that they have a great success, because we were the only ones in there.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, so I'm hoping that.
Oh. I've seen people talking about it though, sort of thing.
It's beautiful, yeah.
I think people just, maybe it's.
It's so much nicer than um Books-A-Million. I mean, it's just, it's beautiful, they really, um, the appointments and everything, so I just, I wish them the best, because I think that um we can work together in, in unison, and um.
We have established a relationship with them. We've been buying books from them, and
Good. Oh, good.
They were here uh when the author Erin Foley was here a week or so ago to sell books.
Oh, good. Oh, very nice.
And so I've already told Laura Crayley, she's got the relationship with them, about sending them the job postings and stuff.
Cause I love Bookbeat, um, but that's so far away. I mean, this is not close, but it's at least, but I just was, I was, I just went in and bought two hundred cards.
Is it between fourteen and fifteen?
Yes. It, yes, and it's where the old, um, it's where Kohl's is, and there's a Henry Ford up, that's where we're there.
Oh, there's.
Then Schuler's, and they took over Pet Supplies Plus, but there was that one department store, that store Stein Mart.
Hmm, yeah.
And the sign is still there, where Stein Mart was, so, yeah, right before the turnaround.
Okay.
Anyway, that's my other, any, the other urns, they need to be, like, take out those dead things.
Um, okay, I was thrilled to see that we're going to um, send out the card, the library card.
Oh, yeah.
And I want to thank, maybe belated, Catherine had given me um some information. I finally got to meet my new neighbor, and um she's very young, and she has a thirteen-month-old. She was so excited about the library, and I hope in my packet I have the December stuff. Um, she's so excited, I told her, and she said, well, do they have anything for young children? I said, we have a young child specialist, and, you know, I told her all about it. She loves to read, she, she is so excited, and she's so new to the area. She said, where's the library? I said, it's right there at Telegraph and Low and Pine, and you know, she said, well, I must have driven right by it, and you know, didn't see it, so. She's really excited, and Catherine had given me some information. I finally got over to the house. So every address will get that. I mean, she must be getting the newsletter.
So she should be getting the newsletter, which have you all received it yet?
Not yet.
Any day now, yeah.
That should be, yeah.
I went to the post office on Friday.
Okay, every address will get it, so she'll get it, yeah.
Um, so every address receives the quarterly newsletter, and then these postcards are going to maybe about thirty percent of the addresses, the residences in the township that do not have a library card on file with us.
Okay.
Um, just kind of an extra, e- even though they do get the newsletter, this is an extra encouragement to come out, get a library card. There's a QR code right on the postcard. People can fill out the um E-card application online, and then just pop in to get their actual card when they have time.
Maybe I'll just pick up an extra.
Cause their card got out yet?
Also this week or next week, yeah.
Okay.
Maybe I'll just pick up an extra intro.
I know, that's a good idea, that really was a good idea.
We'll be competing with the Black Friday sales, but we're offering something that's free, so.
That's true.
Right, and we, um, I forgot to mention that um we have a sample welcome baby bag here.
Yeah, I think it's, it's great. That was beautiful.
Oh, yeah.
So if you wanna check that out, um, you can. This is something that the youth department puts together, the Friends Fund.
Yeah.
Um, so Joan, maybe you could take that with you and give it to.
That's what I was thinking you were talking about.
Yeah.
What's that, that little book?
That's a great idea.
Carry in my collar.
And then there's a little toy, looks like.
Oh, yeah, there's a little toy. A little toy, I don't know if it's the same toy in everyone, and then two books, a bookmark, and then a bunch of information about things that the library has to offer for
A bookmark.
early, early, early readers.
Oh.
And, and a membership envelope for the friends, and it comes in this very cute little bag.
It's great. Um, I have a quick question regarding that card. I think it's a marvelous idea. Um, with the, the last census that we had, we realized that we have quite a diverse um population, and they don't all speak English as their first language, and I'm just wondering if, when we do something different, if there's some way that we could put, um, I don't know how we would do it, but um maybe just one line in each, the top four languages, let's say Spanish, Arabic, um.
That's a good idea.
You know, and then just have that there so that they can hit that and go to whatever it is, and then it also would convert, there's a way, I know that there's a, there's something that you can get on the computer to convert it to their language of choice.
Mm-hmm.
So we have that, I know that um, that's something that you could do, but I'm just thinking that in the future, because I'm sure that of the population who don't have cards, it's simply because they either, um, English is not their first language, and they don't realize the resources here.
That's probably.
There was just a um staff recognition award to um a staff person in the youth department that spent a lot of time with a little boy who was like, what did she say, kindergarten age, I think, like very young.
Very young, very young, early reader.
And um, you know, helped him find a book, and then he wanted her to read him the book, and she did.
Oh.
And then the librarian said, well, maybe you could take all these home and your parents could read them, and he expressed that his mother was, they just moved here from China, and his mother didn't speak a lot of English, and so, that was like this beautiful connection that was made. But yeah, that's a good idea too.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I, I don't know how you would do it, it's 'cause you don't wanna take up too much space, but I just think that people will be looking for that specific language then, and Chinese and Japanese, but, um, yeah.
Right.
Sure.
What about your ESL group that you talked about?
Oh, that was really interesting.
Yeah.
And that was very nice, yeah.
That was terrific, and maybe they would be a good um touchstone for
For this family, yeah.
their, into the various communities that they bring with them, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And then the only other suggestion I have, 'cause you know, um, your suggestion with your friend, um, doing that, and I just, I, I, I know I've mentioned this before, if we could get to the realtors, because so many of the realtors put together a welcome packet, and it would be nice if we had some information about the library in there, you know, how to open a card, and where the lib, where the library is located, and what we offer. Um, and I know that, I'm sure that there's some realtors who would take that on, um, and it probably would be knocking on, or, you know, emailing, texting friends, saying, you're a realtor? Would you consider doing this? Cause I, my friend just moved into a place, and that was a beautiful packet that they put together, um, so.
Do we have any, it seems like all the realtor offices are in Birmingham, but do we have any that are in Bloomfield Township? Maybe we start there.
Yeah. Yeah, or, yeah, or just with friends who um are in a Birmingham office, but they sell properties here, so.
Is it a standard packet, or it's each realtor do its own thing?
This was Bloomfield Township, but she does it for all, 'cause she sells in Birmingham, Bloomfield Township, Bloomfield Hills, Franklin, and so she's now.
Does this realtor do it themselves, or is there a standard in there?
Oh, yes, no, she's, she does it herself, so, um, which I just think is great, and she talks about the schools, the farm, um, the shopping district, the library.
Okay.
I just feel like Welcome Wagon or something like that, but I don't even know if these still exist.
Yeah, I know. I think Birmingham has one, but do people, I don't know if they go and reach out to it, so.
Oh, okay. I don't know. I think it's a great idea, I think maybe we, we can do something with the township or something like that, like, these are all the services.
Right.
Great idea. Love it.
Yes.
Well, thank you very much for, for bringing up those uh items, and Joy, did you have some kind of other that you wanted to share?
Uh, no, I, I, I looked and just thinking, the friends just continued and knocked it out of the park. I mean, it's like every month.
Yeah.
It's a banner month again. Um, but no, just that, you know, thank you for doing that event for them, really, really appreciate it, and um Oh, I know one thing that they're doing, kind of along with our um bylaws and policies, um, they are updating their code of ethics. Uh, code of conduct and whistleblower policy, so, um, they're going through a very thorough and um well-thought-through process with several of them, um, and bringing some new language to their group. To be a little bit more cohesive, and they're working on that, otherwise they're just, you know, killing it, and knocking it out of the park.
Can't keep it going.
Uh, and again, our um donating, gosh, thirty-eight boxes. After all that sale, they donated thirty-eight boxes. Hillell and Troy, School in Pontiac, Bookmobile and Highland Park, it's just, it's uh, spreading the books around very much so.
Really great.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yes.
Does anybody else have any other, other? No, okay, well, then I will mention that our uh, our next meeting will be, our board meeting will be Tuesday, December nineteenth. And we will discuss uh P A one fifty-two, which is health benefits.
Yeah, the premiums that employees and employers have to pay.
Yes, which we do every year in December. Um, and uh, so? Have a wonderful Thanksgiving, everyone.
See you on the third.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, and then meeting again.
We'll be back here the third.
And meeting is adjourned.